Seven o'clock, we'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like everybody to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, peaceful, prosperous, thorough.
Can we call both?
Jim Dombek.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
Dave Shiloh.
Here.
Julie Davie.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Kristen Wren.
Here.
The former president.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Davie?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Wren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Spartan awards. Does somebody want to give a?
Predue?
Tim, you're not introduced.
Well, I'm going to give them the last one.
I think we're going to do it during our presentations, like what's on?
We can do that separate?
What Art wants to do.
Oh, well, I... I'll do it right now.
Tim, would you like to introduce Mrs. Kavanaugh?
This is Mrs. Kavanaugh and her final board presentation of her career. So Dawn's been here longer than me, so she must be older than me. So, may or may not be true, but...
How old are you?
No, you're not.
Okay. Hi, everyone, Dawn Kavanaugh, as Mr. Carlson said. I'm here to recognize two groups from a college art exhibition and Interstate Eight Art Conference Contest Festival. I'm not sure what it's called these days, but it's one of those. The first group is from the Kishawaki College Juried High School Exhibition. The following schools participate: DeKalb, Hiawatha, Indian Creek, Oregon, Rochelle, and Sycamore. I'd say there's probably about, what, I don't know, guys, about 150 pieces of artwork in that show. We did take best in show, you know, like the best in the whole show. And that student is Mia Klein. Mia's not feeling well and can't be here, but she's on the phone. She's right there, Sarah, hi Mia.
Hi Mia.
Congratulations. Her piece is the graphite or pencil piece of her grandpa, second one on the table. Kyle Ness, first place color drawing. Oh, I think you have to work. Okay, thank you. Hannah Sharp, first place ceramics and sculpture. Callie Mansky, second place painting. Grace Mills, third place black and white drawing. Brianna Shamoon, third place color drawing. Walking in. I'll put this, then you go over there. Katie Babus. I got it right. Honorable mention, black and white drawing and honorable mention sculpture, so two awards at that show. And Kit Horn, honorable mention painting. I don't know if Kit's there somewhere. Okay, second group, there's going to be some of the same names, so they can come up here, but I think they're only getting one medal. Come up here and maybe we'll take a group picture. This is the Interstate Eight 2023 Conference. It includes 60 pieces of work from eight schools in our conference. Congrats to our conference champions. We won that one. Mia Klein took best in show at that also. I don't know if she's on the phone still, but congratulations, Mia. Katie Babus took first place in sculpture, no clay. Come on up, Katie. If you want to just stay up here, get your medal. Oh, you already have one, just stay up here. Brooke Patterson, first place photography altered. Kit Horn, first place painting watercolor. Grace Mills, first place drawing color. Scout Schuman, first place mixed media. Emily Baikowski, second place drawing neutral. Maya King, second place painting oil. Lucy Waterson, second place ceramics wheel throne. Hannah Sharp, second place ceramics hand built. Kyle Ness, who's at the track meet, third place drawing color. And Lauren Cohen, honorable mention drawing color. Those are conference champions. Congrats to you guys. What? Did I just call your name? Grace Mills, first place color drawing. Okay. There you go, congrats to you guys.
Yeah, was there anyone in the first group that...
Ready? One, two, three, one, two, three. Oh, Dawn, get in. Please. Hold me up? I'll hold me up, yeah. One, two, three, one, two, three. Awesome, thank you.
Ag is going to go during later, right?
Yeah, I'll believe it.
Okay. Any other honorees, Mr. Carlson? I think we're good for now.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board on any particular issue? No, okay, we'll move on then. Communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters? Certainly had some. Why are requests, look like there were three? Committee records?
We had a planning zoning meeting last night that went almost three hours. Had four agenda items, couple of small ones, but the big one, of course, was adjustments to the Unified Development Ordinance to break apart different divisions of medical cannabis, recreational cannabis, cannabis growers, and cannabis craft growers. So there was a lot of discussion on that that really was meant for the third item, which was an individual that would like to open a craft growing year facility and has a permit or license to do so. And there was a lot of pushback from the community, I think, not a lot of knowledge about how it all works. I think those were, in my estimation, were answered because the vote was, I think, seven to two in favor of passing a favorable recommendation on to the council. So I don't go into all of the details, but it is a very secure, remote facility. They've, a particular individual has done a lot of renovation work in the old Anacottan building, and it's back on the back corner, and it's pretty far away from everything. I think many of the concerns, although legitimate, were answered. So I imagine it will move forward with the council, but we'll see since there are two council members there. But it was a long meeting, and the public had to air their concerns and questions. And then only other thing is next Monday is an SEF meeting, and it's the last grant meeting of the year. We have a grant committee meeting Thursday, I believe it is, right?
Yeah.
Thursday. And then next Monday will be the last grant committee meeting of the year. So there's still money available, so give some more away. That's all I got.
Eric and I attended the finance committee meeting. We talked all things budget, gratitude and appreciation to Nicole for bringing a balanced budget. I'm not quite sure how she keeps doing that. Always seems that there's...
That's a pretty impressive, right?
Yeah, right? It always seems that money is very tight, and yet we still try to do, keep a balanced budget, not use tax anticipation warrants. In fact, maybe Eric, you can talk to this about the goals that the finance office has, the business office has.
So, yeah, and the goal remains to keep a 25% of the debt ratio or fund balance for those unforeseen circumstances that can arise when the state doesn't pay its bills, et cetera, or let the, you know, deal with those cash flow issues, as well as maintain a balanced budget, not go back to tax anticipation warrants. So all those things were met. I think the presentation also had a list of the requests from different building levels as far as the personnel, and I think those requests reflect some of the issues that have been brought up at various board meetings over the last couple of years regarding more the social, emotional wellbeing of students as far as the type of assistance they're looking for. But I think the number of positions that were requested were well in excess of our budget, at least right now, would support, unfortunately. So that's uncommon from what we've encountered for the last, at least, decade that I've been around here. But by and large, I mean, they came with some kind of recommendations for how to move forward, so I'm supporting that.
And I thought Eric actually brought up that perhaps those aren't our goals, those are things that we just have expectation for now, that we won't return to a deficit budget, we won't return to needing tax anticipation warrants, and instead, the goal should maybe be focused on the many requests we received at the building level and to listen and lean into that a bit more. Are there ways to find in some of those positions for events where we'd be as...
Sorry, I didn't know that's where you were going with that.
Yeah, that's okay.
I just observed those are more constraints that we are expecting to offer in other going forwards, so we're going to have a goal, it should be something ambitious that we're moving toward, not something that we're just trying to maintain. Challenge them to come back to us with something, you know, looking at what we know the needs at the high school are, what we know the requests from the building levels are as far as what, which of these are we going to tackle and what priority, you know, what timeframes that we've got something to move toward, as well as just saying, well, we checked off the box, we're still balanced, we're still balanced. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Next item then is Assistant Superintendent for HR, Educational Corporation.
Thanks, Jim. You're gonna call Tim up for the very last time in his career, so this will be the last presentation that...
Tim Carlson getting well?
Maybe we'll come up with something else he's not expecting, but the last time that he'll come up, this is, I think, pretty fitting, who he's going to have speak and just some of the things Tim's brought in that he's emphasized during his career. I can tell you the three programs that are going to come up and speak, they're three of my favorite places to visit when I was here, because you're always seeing students produce things, and some of our needed students. So he's going to present out a little bit first, but then we're going to highlight some of our, I would say, special programs, and not all schools have, that I think our students in Sycamore are extremely lucky to have, and where schools do have it, I don't know that they do it to the level that our students do it and that our advisors do. So we'll start off with Tim, and then he'll hand it off to some of those other teachers.
Okay. Well, I want to start off talking a little about data, but I always, when I talk to other principals and talk to other school districts, I always tell them I'm proud as a board that you guys have never made us a testing school. In other words, you're not focused just on testing, you're focused on having a well-rounded student. We do well on tests, and I'll show you some of that data, we do fine in that, but those three other programs that Nick was talking about aren't necessarily something that we could test on, obviously these awards show that we do well, but we try to have a well-rounded kid. And I think the data will qualify what we do academically in the core classes, but also, more importantly, is that I'm proud to be a part of a school where it's not just about that test, which we literally have tomorrow, that's not just about the SAT test, because all kids aren't going to test well, but all of our kids go up and can be successful later in life. Hit the wrong way, I know. So we always look at our failure trends. So this is a five-year trend, a little, I think this was during COVID, this is the year after COVID, and we're trending down where we should be. And we're way up there in COVID and it keeps continuing to go down. We're not down to where we were pre-COVID, but I think through the hard work of our teachers, we're starting to see things going in the right direction, but obviously I think there's going to be a gap in all these students coming through for the next 10 years. They're going to have some struggles, it's going to be hard to get back there because of what they lost. Especially with our freshmen, they tend to struggle. I think during COVID, kids found different ways to find answers to math, but may not have looked in applying themselves to get that. So we had struggles this year with kids coming in and maybe not having the skill levels they have. But we do try to look at this and say, where can we do better? But even trying to keep this in context, if you look at one year, I think we had 258 failures at the end of the semester. Well, most of our kids graduate with 22 and a half credits, so let's say there's 1,200 kids, and let's say they only took five classes instead of six, that's 6,000 grades the kids could have got, minus the 258, Eric will correct my math if I'm wrong, but means 99.957% of those kids passed classes. So it's still a very minute number that aren't, but that's an important number of those kids who aren't. Those are the kids that usually come from trauma, have issues outside of school, have some things that they're out of their control, so how do we help them? Because they need the most help. But again, on a broad scale, our kids do very, very well. We look at our math SAT comparison, we do as well as everybody in our area except for the schools to the east, which we've always said the number one predictor for test scores is socioeconomic status, so we struggle against St. Charles, the Potavias, Burlington, but we're above the state average, and we do very, very well within the schools in our area and in our conference. So trying to, again, show at pre-, post-COVID, we're coming back. When I go to ELA, we're as good as, or better than, everybody in the area except for the schools to the east, so our local schools are a little bit behind us. So I'm, again, proud of the work in both of those, that what our teachers have done to get our kids back to where we'd like them to be. One area that we have done very well is the state science assessment. We have competed with the schools to the east on the state science assessment. So this isn't just a one-year snapshot that we did really well this year. This has been, if I did a five-year trend, we have done just as well, if not better, than some of those schools to the east. Science is always rigorous in our school, they have a high expectation, but they get a very good result on this exam, so that's one area that we have done very, very well. Things that we look at also, weekly, we go through, every week we sit down as a admin team, and we try to review our failures, our interventions, how many kids are going to interventions, what our tardies are, what our absences are, number of missing assignments. So again, trying to look at these charts and correlate and say, well, if the failures are up, why is that? Or if failures are up, are there more interventions the next week to make sure kids are getting help? Sometimes failures are up, and we just need to go talk to a department, they'll say, well, we just assigned a term paper, it's English, they get five rewrites, first one's going to be rough, they're probably not going to be real successful, so failures are going to get up, but those will go down. So we do try to analyze that data every week and try to figure out what's going on. So that's just a way for us to keep tracking our progress throughout the year, so. And so that kind of leads into, I'm going to have Mr. Swanson to talk about how we are trying to use this type of data more successfully. Mrs. Pointer is going to be a part of what Mr. Swanson is going to talk about, maybe she could speak a little bit in her presentation, what she's done, so.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, guys, for letting us speak this evening. So I'm going to go through one of our intervention programs that we have here at the high school that we started at second semester, which is our supportive study halls. This is actually the second year that we've done it, we've always started at second semester. So what we do is we highlight the students that have failed classes from first semester, and then right now we're in the midst of looking at kids that are failing classes right now, and then we're moving these students into these supportive study halls to help give them more individualized support. So we do have one of our supportive study hall staff here, and I'm going to let her kind of talk about what that looks like on a day-to-day, because she sees that more than I do, but I'm just going to talk about it on a broad spectrum of overall the success that we've had with it and kind of what we want to do moving forward. So we've identified these kids that aren't passing classes. The first session, we focused more on those kids that failed from first semester. We temporarily removed them from their study hall, their flax, their lounge, if they had that built into their schedule, and then we moved them into these study halls, and they've been in there for about a three to four week rotation. Students have the opportunity to get out of there if they get their grades back up to passing, and they schedule a meeting with myself or another one of the APs to review how their grades are going and get them back on track, just to make sure that they're going to be moving forward in a successful route versus what led them there in the first place when they weren't doing too well in their classes. So our MTSS, our problem-solving team, we meet regularly, and this consists of our student services members, so school counselors, social workers, school psychologists. We spend that time in each week identifying those kids that are going to be ready for the next session. So we just started our fourth session, which will be all of April. We're already talking today about which kids are going to be a good fit for the one that we have in May, which will be kind of our final push as we get to the end of the school year. So that's just a broad scale of what that looks like. This slide right here is a tracking and data slide, so this is where I'm going to have Mrs. Pointer talk about this, because this is kind of a accountability measure, but it's also helped us to see how students are doing, and it gives us data if this program is being successful. So I took away all the student names, I left mine as the example one up there, but you can kind of see it lists the room number, we have ID of the student, the student name, which week that they're starting in the session, and then it gives the number of Fs. And then so going along, you'd see right there, you'd see Monday and Tuesday support, but that goes Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and the teacher can then go ahead and put the level of support that they're providing for the student. And then they go ahead and repeat that each week, and then we take a look at that data, which you'll see here in a second. But then I'm going to have Kara go ahead and just talk about what that looks like on a day-to-day in her classroom.
So a lot of these students just need that extra level of support. They don't have the resources at home, their parents might not be at home, so I kind of act as that. I always say I act as their parent. I'm on them when they come, and they get a post-it note from me, and all teachers do it differently. We have access to Canvas, which is nice, because it's real-time data, we can see exactly what they're missing as of like right now, because sometimes it doesn't seem to infinite campus fast enough, so they get a post-it note that they know that's what they're working on. I have them email teachers and always CC me on it, because, you know, they're learning to communicate with their teachers, hey, I'm in supportive study hall, can you please let me take the test with Mrs. Pointer today? I literally sit and I go, okay, why is this missing? And sometimes I've sat next to them, learning math along with them, watching, you know, watching the videos of how to do it, but it's just that person that they know I'm there to support them, I have their back, and sometimes they've never had that before. I have had some kids who've not wanted to leave. They're passing all their classes, and they just like the environment, they know that I'm there. I do feed them snacks, because sometimes I think food is a motivator, because sometimes they don't eat breakfast, I have them third hour, their, you know, their blood sugar's running low or whatever, I give them a snack or two, and that can motivate them to move forward. So we just sit, and it's literally like a check-in on Monday, you get your list of assignments, I email home, I email teachers, I send good emails. When they do good, I said, hey, this kid was failing six classes, she's now only failing two. And I've seen those successes. Last year, a girl started with failing all of her classes, and she graduated. So it was one of those things where she just said she's never had somebody care about her enough to see her grades be where they were. I don't know if that's all true, but it's just somebody every day consistently saying, this is what you have to do. And they don't do homework outside of school a lot of times, so I'm the person that's making them sit there, not on their cell phones, not on doing whatever, and just doing their work. So I think we've seen a lot of success. Like I said, I have kids that ask to stay, I have a kid who's in there, he doesn't even have any failing grades, and he just comes in, and he's kind of a support to one of his friends who's in there. So that's kind of a good relationship, too, to see them working on math and chemistry together, stuff that I probably couldn't help them with, but he has somebody in there who can help him. And we do have NHS students that pop into some of the study halls, too, to act as those peers. And then we've actually talked about maybe next year starting it, hopefully, maybe first semester, maybe with some freshmen that need that push from the beginning as we go.
It's a perfect segue into the next slide here, so...
Sorry, didn't even know that. Sorry.
But no, seriously, huge shout-out to Kara and the rest of our staff, they just did a tremendous job with these kids. Like Tim was talking about, it is a small percent relatively when you look at all the kids that are failing classes, so they usually experience some baggage beforehand to get them to where they're at. So these staff members are working with these kids to get their grades up, and some of them face trauma, and it's really difficult to, you know, get them here to school sometimes and really get them to get their grades up. So her and everyone else that's part of this has done a tremendous job. So, I mean, we wouldn't be as successful if it wasn't for them and just their willingness to support our kids here in Sycamore. All right, so a little bit of data, so our first session, I didn't have any data for that, because when we started it from January, there were no grades, so I didn't want that data to be skewed, so we took it from the second session, third session, and then, like I said, fourth session just started. So from our second session, how it started, out of all the students that were in there, it varies between about 40 and 50 kids that are placed in all of these supportive study halls, so we had 120 total student Fs. At the end of that session, that went down to 82 student Fs, which was a 32% decrease. So that was fantastic to see. Session three, that just wrapped up right before spring break, we started off with 125 total student Fs, and that went down to 100, which is a 20% decrease in student Fs. So that was, again, fantastic to hear, and I'm going to imagine that that trend is going to continue here during this fourth session, which will take us up until May, and then we'll start that fifth one for our final push. So as Kara alluded to, moving forward, we've really recognized that a lot of our freshmen really struggled with that first semester in high school. So our reality, if we can take a look at that up there, is two years ago, or excuse me, so last year in school year '22, 95 out of the 245 students in the freshman class, so that's 38% of them were failing classes. And then last year, or excuse me, this year, we had 104 out of the 259 in the freshman class, so about 40% Fs after the first semester. We've recognized some data that 102 students flagged from our MAP data in school year '22, so based on students who scored under the 40th percentile. So we've recognized this need with our freshman students, and instead of waiting until second semester, what we want to do is we want to identify these kids coming into high school next year and start these supportive study halls right off the bat with them. And hopefully this trend can go down, and we're not seeing it go up in the bad direction that it is. So that's kind of our goal, starting next year, is I'm working with our middle school staff to identify some of these students, and what we can do to help support them, put them in these supportive study halls, and get it going right away for these kids. Because, like I said, we've seen the success, so let's start it right away. And that's all I have on supportive study halls. I'm going to go ahead and reintroduce Dawn Kavanaugh, who's going to talk about some of the cool things that our art department's doing.
I'm going to reintroduce her, too.
Oh, go ahead.
One of the great things about Dawn, being here so long, and I've been here as long as she has, is not only the great art that these kids produce, but we always talk, our goal at high school, 100% of the kids are college or career-ready, that you can see the fruition of the careers that these kids have gone into and the success they've had because of their work they've done in art. Again, it's not something that's probably testable, but she does have a slide, we'll talk about the different careers, and being here this long, and she has, we've watched these kids grow up, become adults, and go into careers in art and...
Have their kids here, and they've all graduated.
Yeah, and their kids are here now, too, but I think that's a testament to Dawn, and she is having alumni art show, and it's a testament to how many people she'll talk about tonight who are coming back for the alumni art show that support here her and understand what an impact she has made on their life, so.
Wait, I get control of this?
No.
Because I'm, yeah. Because I'll mess that up, for sure. Me again, hello, everyone. Okay. I don't know if this, does this work? Oh, okay, we'll see what happens.
Down there, we'll...
Okay, all right, well, we'll hope for the best. Did you see how many slides I put in here? I just put like 40, I didn't mean to. I cut out like 50, no, I'm just kidding. This logo was designed by Ross Martin, and it was a little nod to me, which was very sweet, sunrise, sunset, that's the dawn. Isn't that cute? We even have merch made with that, it's pretty cool, too. Hey, I did it. Good times. Okay, so I know that every single one of our teachers feels extremely lucky to work with Sycamore students, they are so cool. I tell you that right in class? I do. I love them. And we all do. They're the highlight of our program since I've been here and probably before, but since nineteen ninety, when I walked in this door. Remember that, Julian? Yeah, you were here. This is them in that slide, picture on the right. They step up. They showed up to curriculum night, they set up that whole exhibit, and they represent us so well and answer questions for incoming freshmen and their parents. I'm just always so proud. This is just them being silly. Yes, I have animal masks in the art room. I have about twenty, I don't know why, but we won't ask questions. And then, the group on the left is celebrating after our conference championship, which was a great moment for all of us. Showing up to art shows, just some random photos I put in here for you. This is them enjoying their art merch in my third-hour AP honors. A lot of them are here right now. Didn't know I put that in there, did you? Isn't it great? This is just a random collection of photos from field trips, or selfies, or, I can't even see it, it's kinda light, but just random art photos we put in. Kids having fun. And I really think they love that they have a place to be creative, pursue their interests, but also they feel safe. They can be themselves. That's a huge part. I know we recognize these students, I just wanted to share the photographs we took at the actual event. This is at Kish College, and some of our award winners. I love Grace's face in this one. She stood there, I don't know. And this is at the conference competition at Morris High School. That day, we go to workshops while the stuff's being judged, we come back, then we're all surprised by what ribbons we got, and even one student's like, mine's gone. Like, it's cuz it got moved to the first-place table, honey. It was great. I know we're focusing on high school program tonight, but I can't help but mention the K-12 team, they're amazing. I believe five of the eight art teachers are Sycamore alum, which is pretty cool. So two high school and two middle school and one elementary, all went here. That's your group up there at some different events. Wrong button, sorry. That's us at my house. And then, I don't know what, Erin DeWitt put together the right one. I apologize for my face. I think I have cheese that says teeth. Sorry about that. You may not know, or maybe you do, that the art department gets asked to judge the floats in the Pumpkin Fest parade for probably the past fifteen years. I'd like to say it's work, but it's a blast. We have so much fun. We get to preview all the floats that wanna be judged. We get to ride on the golf cart, we have these ribbons that make us feel really important. So I, and they have the, you know, the Pumpkin Fest pins, have you seen those? We all get one of those, too. Limited edition, it's pretty great. Real quick, just our course offerings. I know Tim and Brian maybe mentioned that, and Nick did also. We have a lot of offerings here for a school our size, and we're really proud of the opportunities that kids have with these classes. We added AP probably eight years ago, honors probably five years ago, and we're working on a new course called Careers in Art. We just have to get kids to sign up for it, but when it runs, I know it'll be amazing. And that will be alum coming in that are in their career, talking to our kids, and then our kids doing projects related to that in the community. An example might be, I have a student who does window installations for anthropology in Naperville. Really cool art stuff she does. She'd come and talk to us about that, teach us some of her stuff. We'd ask a business in Sycamore if our group of kids in that class had come in, and we'd do a window installation at that place. That'd be a three-week unit in that class. We have, Erin has a giant binder of units planned ahead, and hopefully, that class runs in the very near future. It's gonna be great. Have to talk about our art shows, a couple of past, upcoming shows, too. We do have several shows that are K-12, and some of them in our gallery and some are in the community. This is just photos from the December last fall. And have any of you been to Mr. McCormick's visual art shows? Anybody walked into one of those? This man works hard to make it an amazing experience for everybody who attends, and he has music and food inspired by each culture that is represented in the show. He drives hours to get the groceries. He really does. And he subscribes to a company that sends in food from the, it's just, this guy makes it a special event. And he has three to four of these a year for that class, for visual cultures. There he is, happy about his art show. Photo cred to me, cuz I think it's a great photo. Okay, Kishwaki Valley Art League is a business downtown, nonprofit gallery. Maybe you've heard of it, KVAL Gallery on State. They honor four of our students, two in the fall, two in the spring, and these are the honorees this year. These students have to prepare a five-to-ten-minute presentation about their work and speak in front of adults. They're all very nervous, but they do an excellent job and represent us extremely well. This was just last Thursday, the students on the right. They also host our four-by-five show. Everything's literally just four-by-five. It doesn't, it does nothing extra about that. Everything is four-by-five inches. That means we can fit more in. So over three-hundred-and-fifty pieces of artwork, and within two hours, someone at Kishwaki Valley Art League's like, oh, you think a lot of people attend the show? And someone's like, I'm gonna count. So they did. Four-hundred-and-sixty-five people walked through last year, and I'm sure, I think more walked through this year in two hours. That's pretty incredible. Like, not a line out, well, there was a line out the door, I don't know if anybody went to that, but, maybe we feel kinda bad cuz it's chilly, but they make a loop and they go in, and it's a great community thing. Upcoming art shows, the Alumni Art Show, this is our third. It's every two years with the, we had to skip a year, you know, due to the bump during COVID. But this is our third show, and I'll talk about the other shows as well. I do have invites for you for the Alumni Art Show, I'll leave them on the table by the art. I have, this is not my whole list. When I made the presentation, I got more people to sign up. You have the student's name and their year. We're going back to nineteen eighty-eight, that's Mr. McCormick. And then, he wasn't my student, but I missed him only by two years. Then, I think my student that is the longest far, is nineteen ninety-two, Sam Wildison, and Jen Madden, too. So over forty artists, and I'm currently hanging the show in the gallery, over seventy-five pieces of artwork. What are they doing now, some of them? I won't go through the list, but here's your list of just some of those students and what their current jobs are in their creative endeavors or creative pursuits. Another art show, it's our third annual. This one came about during the twenty-twenty-one school year, because we typically host about ten to tw- host or attend about twelve to fifteen shows, and we couldn't do any of that. We were feeling kinda like, oh, we gotta do something. So it was one of the art teachers' idea to have a scavenger hunt in the community, and all the work was in the windows. So you didn't have to go into a business, you didn't have to be inside. We, Mr. McCormick makes a QR code, scavenger hunt, he's playing the ukulele, and gives a clue, and you go to the next business. They all end up at the tent with their art teachers. Obviously, the first tent, we have our masks on. And of course, we all have to coordinate and match and look, you know, nice in our art shirts. This next one is May second, it's four to six PM. We have the scavenger hunt, we have a food truck, we have all the insurance, all the permits, everything's filled out, we're all good, and we're excited about that event. Another show that's extra special, I think, is the Honors AP Show. Several of those students are here tonight. They will curate the show, which means they will decide what's hanging and where. They'll design the invite. They will have to invite five people with the rule that it has to be a friend, a family member, a teacher, not all from the same group. And the show is very well-attended, and it's extra special for them for that. Most of them, their last high school art show. That was last year at these classes. This is just a bunch of random photos of field trips, workshops, presenters. We had Samantha Butkus come back and teach a workshop on needle felting, kinda like painting with wool. There's an art club field trip to the museum in Chicago, a field trip to OC Creative, to Envision Printing, and some other, a field trip, or a workshop that teachers went to in Chicago, and a visual cultures field trip in there. All these opportunities for kids. And just what some of your art teachers are doing. I presented at the IAEA Q Center in St. Charles with teachers from, well, I'm not gonna read hers, cuz she's taught everywhere, Genoa, Sycamore, and some colleges, and other instructor. That lady, Dr. Ann Becker, I consider her the queen of art education, she's fantastic. We had a lot of fun. Mr. McCormick, I don't know if any of you have attended his Bob Ross workshops, but they're extra special, too. He just becomes Bob Ross during those. Those workshops, I don't, you know, we get to sign up for those, it like comes out at four PM on one day, done, just like Kara's flower ones. You can't get in there, people are kinda like, what the heck, I didn't get in that. It's done within the first minute. So that's his with Bob Ross and Pastel Pumpkins. And Erin DeWitt is our expert wheel-throwing person, art teacher, and this is a workshop she did, and the images on the right are, I believe, staff members that threw on the wheel, perhaps glazed it, and now it's in their office being a functional piece of art. Pretty cool. Throwing on the wheel is not easy. It takes a lot of practice, so that's really good if they just did one workshop. We do all kinds of things. We have students' art club, this is Erin and her art club. They are actually painting stuff in here, right here on the wall, and in the back room there, painting murals, taking field trips, face painting at, I think, every elementary fun fair, involved in Pumpkin Fest. She keeps them very busy, and the meetings are typically thirty to forty people in her art room, or she's had to move them to the cafeteria because they're so large and well-attended. It's a great group, and she does an excellent job. Okay, sneak peek, this is it, this is the wrap-up of my fifty-million slides. Did I go pretty quickly, though, right? Yeah? We are working with OC Creative this year, luckily, and they are designing our magazine. The magazine started, Greg Dodario, I think you're over here somewhere, and I talked during the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one school year, what, how can we get more art out there? Yeah, we did the art walk, and it's not the first fine arts magazine that's ever been made here, it's not, but let's bring it back. And this one you're seeing is a alumni page of Una Holtain, class of two thousand and sixteen, I think. She is a freelance illustrator and has worked for Netflix and Disney and Pixar. And this is some of her work from a trip to Brazil, so it's really nice. We have two alumni being featured, we have four seniors, several of those seniors are here tonight. And I said over seventy-five students, but it actually went up to ninety, including the creative writing portion from Mr. Dodario's students. It'll really be a beautiful magazine. I can't wait to see it, and I'll make sure you all get a copy. And then, another little sneak peek of some of the things that are in there. Sycamore students work hard to achieve this level of talent. Last, thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. Thank you for dealing with all of my slides, and thanks for letting me teach here for thirty-three years, it's been great.
You've been lucky, Dawn.
Yes.
Thank you. Who gets this?
I don't know that I said it, but this is also Dawn's last presentation course, too. She'll be retaken after the year. Next is Kara Pointer, can we talk about ag class? Kara liked Dawn. Dawn has grown the art department to a three-teacher department. Kara started the same thing, she started at point eight, and now we have three-point-four FTEs in the ag department. This year or next year?
Next year.
Next year, okay. Three-point-five next year. So constantly motivating kids, and even when you see the art, you see all the outside activities that kids have and the opportunities that draws them into it. Kara does the same, but they've done an excellent job. They've given, I know you, know they won a national award in December for one of the most outstanding CTE programs in the country, so congratulations to them, but all their hard work really pays off.
Thanks. I thought it was three-point-six, and it corrected me last meeting, so it was only three-point-five. Anyway, I brought Christian Therlinger and Brooke Heinsohn with me tonight, and I also have some students that'll come up and talk here shortly from Ag Academy that could be with us tonight. I don't have very many slides, I have a lot on a little slide I know, and I have some pictures. So we're all just gonna kinda talk a little bit about some different things and jump back and forth. So we've driven by lately, we have a new greenhouse shed addition. I call it a she-shed, it's not, but Mark Extron worked really hard. Our greenhouse got new ventilation systems, updated heating and cooling, which has made a big difference. And now, we have a shed where all of the storage can be, and kids can plant, so our whole greenhouse can be used just for plants. I welcome you anytime to walk out there right now, it is full, it is beautiful. Jen Eiffel came and took pictures today to start advertising for the sale that I'll let Brooke talk about in a little bit. It really just is one of those additional things for opportunities outside of the classroom, and that's what we're always looking for. We have done a great job with our vertical articulation, I think. Kevin Bolts and Chris Rann at the middle school meet with us, and we really try to get that six-twelve curriculum to align. And one of those things that we saw was missing is a foods class of some sort. So Christian does a little bit right now with one class, with the special ed class and the peer leaders, but we saw a need for more, cuz there's a lot of kids that love that class at the middle school, and then they get to the high school, and they're like, what can we take? So we have three new sections next year of classes, so we have two sections of the Farm-to-Fork and one of Intro to Vet Tech and Animal Studies. So I'm gonna let these two talk a little bit about what those classes are gonna entail, and that's how we get to our three-point-five for next year, and so we're hoping to just keep growing our classes. So I'll let Christian talk about Farm-to-Fork, and Brooke talk a little bit about the Intro to Vet Tech and Animal Studies.
So the Farm-to-Fork class kinda came to me a little bit out of inspiration in terms of, what do we call this class? I can't just call it a foods class. I think that's not enticing enough to maybe wanna learn a little bit more, and so ironically, I was like, well, I'm an ag teacher, but I'm also talking about the food that we eat. And so, how do we make those connections of, where does our food come from, and then how do we prepare it, and how do we eat it effectively, right? Like, there's a lot of different ways to cook food when you look culturally across the United States, across the world, things like that. So with that class, we're really hoping to kinda dive into the aspects of where does our food start? So seedlings, baby animals, things like that, and then, how do we actually make food out of that? Kinda dipping into, a little bit back to what Kara and Brooke talk about in their BSA classes, or their biology class, is how do we feed the world going forward? So what are some of the things that we're seeing when we go to Feed My Starving Children? Why is rice the main ingredient? Why is it a specific type of rice? So looking at genetics and things like that as it pertains to the food industry. So really excited to see how that class runs. Still, you know, kind of a little nervous in terms of how that is going to look, being a semester class, which would potentially speed up our curriculum a little bit, so having that, just on that sixteen-week schedule, I think will be really interesting. So I'll turn it over to Brooke to talk a little bit about vet science.
So vet science is a, I think, a natural follow-up to our BSA class. We're teaching a lot of biology, body systems, but we're specifically looking at animals in BSA, and then doing some comparative anatomy with different animals. So the vet tech class is kind of a natural follow-up, and it'll give students an opportunity to kinda see what they would be working with, with their own pets or their own livestock, working with, with their own pets or their own livestock and kind of learning those basic, um, technical skills. Uh, they could then take those skills and go work, uh, in a vet office as a vet tech or even further on with a veterinarian school, um, along those lines. So it's just a semester course. Gives those kids some options to take their junior year, uh, or senior year as a, just a semester and get them a little bit more uh, hands-on with the, um, animal side of things. So I think it's really important that they, uh, most people are pet owners or they know somebody who's a pet owner, uh, so getting used to those skills and maybe why uh, the vet is doing certain things. And so you have an idea of what to expect, uh, going into adulthood and taking care of, uh, your own animals, so. Uh, and with horticulture, um, I'm also looking at trying to get dual credit. So when I was at Cayman um, teaching, I had dual credit with KISH and I was working to get dual credit with COD as well, College Edge. Uh, so I'm looking to do that with some of our courses here and add some more dual credit or get some more science credit for those classes uh, that students would already be taking.
So when Brooke came to us, she was teaching science and Ag at Cayman, so she has a science background, so that really helps. We have some ideas, maybe as Scott Horlock and Pam, um, retire, maybe we can start doing some more with the science department to bring some of those environmental science classes in. We would love this Farm to Fork class to maybe even have a capstone class of hospitality. You know, looking at what, um, Chris Mayer's doing down there, um, with his new building that he put in, he's gonna need people to serve. You know, we have, um, we have a need for that in our community, so what can we do to help prepare those people that are going into that? So Tim mentioned we were, um, lucky enough to receive the award in Las Vegas. Um, some community connections. We're always in the community making connections. This Friday, May Anderson and I have worked really hard on a hiring fair that we have for students here at Sycamore High School. We have thirty businesses coming in looking to hire students. And as of today, we have over seventy-five students resume in hand that they had to turn in to me, ready to go. So we have seventy-five students walking in with a resume, ready to get hired for a job. And I'm really, really, really excited about that. I think we're gonna have more than that. Um, Bruce Griffith is bringing both of his academies. We have a couple, like, consumer classes coming through, but these kids know they're coming and they hopefully might get a job that day. So we're really looking forward to that. That's, they donated money to be here, so we're able to give away gift cards and scholarships to these kids that come through. So it's, you know, I think sometimes you think of a job fair and kids just walk through, pick up the free stuff and leave. And I don't really think they make the connection. And I really wanted them to make a connection, whether it's for now or an internship later, or even when they graduate and come back to the community. So that was our job. We called it a Hiring Expo, Hiring Fair. That was kind of what we had in mind. Mr. Therlinger's in the middle of a lawnmower clinic right now, so you-
As if we weren't busy enough already.
Um, so anyway, so that's going on right now, so, uh, more community members coming in, seeing what we're doing. I took my Ag Academy kids to CHS the next day. Uh, Dave Kleckner and Steve Meish reached out to me and said, hey, we have this grant. We want to give you money. All we need you to do is sit down and sign your name. Okay, so we got some money from them, hopefully to go towards a new, um, welding CNC plasma, plasma table. Um, so we have some other funds coming in. I don't want to sound like I'm bragging, but we do have people oftentimes that want to give us money. Um, there was a gentleman whose mom passed away recently, if you saw in the obituary. And he's like, we're gonna put Sycamore Fay on there. My parents had a love for that, so we're gonna ask in lieu of flowers to have donations made. I was like, I felt honored, you know, and I have people, I have a lady that sends money from California, so we have a fund for those things to try to get new equipment for our kids, because I think it's important for us to keep those updated. You can talk about Western Molding Academy. I'll come to Ag Academy in a second, but-
Okay. Um, so back February, I think it was twenty-second potentially, during a Fay week, because again, we don't have enough to do in one week, so we just add one more thing. Um, so Western Molding Academy is from Gillette, Wyoming. Um, so they travel around, uh, basically the entire United States with a truck and a tour bus. And what they do is they teach kids and show kids kind of what it is welding can be. Um, and so they actually came into our shop for a day, did an actual demonstration with students, uh, allowed some students to kind of get a different feel for what welding is. Beyond what I can teach them in the welding shop down here, but this adds the practicality to it. So these are guys that are going out and working in food industry, so they're welding a lot of stainless steel pipes, things like that with different procedures than what we're doing here. So I teach them a lot of the basics and kind of build up that passion for welding. But then beyond that, you know, what is it you can do with these basic skills that I've given you? So Western Molding Academy was awesome. Uh, they came in, uh, very high energy. I mean, these are twenty-ish-year-old kids that are making sixty-five dollars an hour, hundred and fifty dollars if they work an hour on a Sunday. So they get to talk a little bit about what it's like being in a union job, uh, things like that. So I thought that was a really, really good experience for those individuals and, and like I said, the kids loved it. They gave away all kinds of free hats and stickers and things like that. So kids got to go home with, uh, a little bit of a prize at the end of the day, so that was really awesome.
You can talk about Sparticon.
Okay.
There's a picture there.
Alright. Uh, so during, uh, Sparticon this year, uh, we also hosted, uh, a flower workshop, so teachers had an opportunity to sign up. Again, uh, as, um, it was just mentioned a few minutes ago by Dawn, we, uh, it's one of those that as soon as it goes out, it gets filled up right away. So we had two sessions that day. They both filled up, uh, I think within the first five minutes and we had, uh, lots of happy teachers making flowers that day. My room smelled glorious, um, and everybody went home with some really nice floral arrangements. Tried to pick flowers that are gonna last a long time, so they'll, uh, be shelf-stable at home for a long time. And I had people still talking about them after Thanksgiving about how long they had lasted. So, uh, that was awesome that we got to, uh, be a part of that day, so. I can also talk about the plant sale. So, um, my actual background is in horticulture. I worked fifteen years in the industry before I switched over to teaching. Um, so I've got a lot of greenhouse experience. I've got a lot of floral experience. Uh, and so this year, we've got a really nice plant sale coming up. Um, we will open up on, uh, Thursday, May eighth. Uh, we'll be open until the Saturday before, uh, Mother's Day. Uh, I've got a really nice selection of vegetables, herbs, uh, some really nice flowering annuals, uh, and a smaller selection of perennials. So I know Kara mentioned, you're welcome to come through at any time, but yes, if you would like to walk through the greenhouse, uh, it's blooming and it's beautiful and it's nice and warm, um, uh, the cooler days, which it's supposed to be again next week. Uh, right now, it's a little on the warm side, but a really nice selection of things that we're happy to, to share with you guys. So on the very first day, on May eighth, that Thursday, we'll be open from three until five thirty and we'll have a petting zoo, uh, that day as well as our opening. The rest of the days during the week, we're open, three to four thirty, and the weekends, uh, tend to do, while supplies last.
So there was pictures up there. I put the new pictures of the shed, um, that we have, so the door opens on the end, so you can wheel in like a pallet full of soil, because oftentimes that's stored in Christian's shop and we really like, uh, he really, really likes when people store stuff in his shop. So anyway, so we, um, are able to, you know, roll a pallet in there. Um, there's a lot of space for the, like I said, the potting tables, so all of that mess now can be away. And when it's time for the greenhouse sale, you just shut that door and nobody sees, uh, behind that closed door. Uh, the flowers were on the left. That was us in Las Vegas. Tim was actually able to go with us and Kevin Bolts, which was nice. Um, I took my seniors who I'm gonna have come up and talk, uh, one of our tours we went to this year, Chase Clausen, got us in it. This year, we could not get into the combine factory. The only place that was giving tours was the Construction and Forestry Division, which was super interesting. So behind us is a road grader that we got to see. We, we got to see dump trucks. It was a whole eye-opening experience for a lot of us. Um, so I'm gonna have my Ag Academy students that were able to be here with us tonight come up and speak. Um, they're just gonna tell you a little bit about themselves, what they're doing. Um, they have done one of their two job shadows and then they're just gonna say a little bit, hopefully, nice things about my class, because they all love me as much as I love them. And then I'll finish with some awards and we'll be done.
Uh, hi, I'm Brandon Kuhn and, uh, next year I'm looking to get into the local twenty-three pipeters union. And, uh, for my first job shadow, I job shadowed Jake O'Donnell at O'Donnell Crane and learned about the crane industry. And a couple of things I've learned in Miss Pointer's class is be on time and have a hard work, work ethic.
Hi, my name's Tyler Schmidt. In the fall, I planned to attend Montrique College in North Carolina with a major in environmental science and a minor in music. In March, I job shadow Crystal Lindgren at the Genoa Kingston Fire Department. And something I've learned about, um, Miss Pointer's class is, um, all like the various careers that you can, like, pursue, even if those aren't your, like, aspirations. It's just fun to, like, know about them. And I've learned the importance of networking.
Hi, my name is Kylie Watery. Next year, I will be attending Lakeland College, a two-year college in Mattoon, Illinois. As of right now, I'm planning on majoring in Ag Education or Ag Business. With that being said, for my job shadow, I had the opportunity to go over to Genoa Kingston High School and job shadow their Ag teacher, Miss Gabriel. And it was a great experience. I got to learn and see the day in the life of an Ag teacher over there and just what it takes to become an Ag teacher. In Miss Pointer's class, it has allowed me to learn a lot of life skills. Some of those life skills include time management, communication skills, and building relationship with others. This class has not only built my knowledge, but it's also built me as a person.
Hi, my name's Ally Okum and next year I'm planning on going to the University of Wisconsin-Plattville to study Ag Business and Ag Communications. Last month, I had the opportunity to job shadow Anna Shelkoff at the DeKalb County Farm Bureau, where I learned about, um, marketing, advertising, and outreach to the community. One thing I have learned from Mrs. Pointer's class is to ask good questions and gather good information.
Hi, my name is Josh Melms. Next year I'll be attending, um, KISH and I'll be getting my gen eds out of the way and I'll be golfing out there. I job shadowed Mr. Irving, or Mr. Chapman with Irving Construction. He's a project manager. And I thought it was really cool to go see what it takes to be a project manager and all the communication with people. And lessons I've learned with her class is keeping contact with people, with good communication, and also networking.
Hi, my name's Bella Kirchman. I, um, I'm going, I totally forgot everything I was gonna say for a second. I am planning on going to University of Tennessee next year and majoring in Plant Sciences and Biosystems Engineering. I job shadowed at Bayer, um, in Waterman just last week. They bought out Monsanto, so that was pretty much more of what I did, like the seed physiology, um, and seeing them test different seeds and seedlings. Uh, I really enjoyed that experience. And, uh, I've learned a lot in Miss Pointer's class, just about how each individual person can contribute so much to a community, whether that be local or just on a global scale. Uh, we've met with Jeff Keiker and gone to the Farm Bureau and just seeing how all these individuals are really making an impact on their community. Um, and not anyone can do that, so, yeah.
Good job, Kirchman.
They were all a nervous wreck and they did just fine. Bella did come home and say, though, that that's maybe not the type of plant science she wants to do. And I said, it's, it's important to know what you don't want to do, just as it's important to know what you do want to do. So now we're looking at her next one, maybe to do something else. So the last thing I want to end with is just some student awards. Um, Bella's my only state degree who was able to be here tonight. Um, the other ones had work obligations, which I totally understand, um, because that's part of what my kids do, right? They contribute to the community in so many ways and one of them is working. Um, so Bella is going to get her state degree in June, so if you want to get Mr. Don back, that would be my only student award that's here tonight. Um, so she'll get her state degree in June, um, along with, um, Madison Block, Logan Stazarowski, and Cole Roach. So thank you, Madison, for being, or, thank you, Bella, for being here since Madison, Logan, and Cole could not, so congratulations. And we just got word that we'll have six American degrees, so these are students who have graduated, who have continued to keep their records. So this is the highest degree you can get, um, as an FFA member. So they keep their records one year after school. So Isaac Ward, who's at UW-Plattville, um, studying crop sciences. Sarah Ward is at KISH studying nursing. Miranda Wilbur is in beauty school right now, debutantes, is that what that's called? Jordan Block is at KISH and she'll be transferring to Kansas. Molly Griffey is my section president. Um, she is in the process of selection committee to possibly running for state office, so she's at KISH right now. And then Samantha Lynn is at Blackhawk College. She is transferring to Texas to be in a horse judging riding team in Texas. I don't know what school. Anyway, so those students will get, um, November first this year, Saturday, November first will be national convention where they'll get those awards. Um, the three students from last year were recognized, I think, already for their National Agri-science and that was Ally Okum, Drake Sletz and Lorelei, and their green signs are in town. You probably see them. Um, and then the last one was about Molly Griffey being section president this year. So we've had the opportunity to host leadership training schools. We get to host banquets. We get to host section kickoff, so we have a little extra duty. Um, but I can't thank Mr. Carlson enough, um, for his time that he's put into our program. Um, he's always let me kind of do my thing and he's always wanted a school within a school in our program. And he understands the value of kids who don't have any other place to go. They usually can find a spot in our program. So I, I thank Mr. Carlson, Mr. Rannick, when he was here too. You know, they always came down. They wanted to see what was going on and I think that's really important. And with strong, you know, members of my department, I think we're just gonna keep growing. Um, and I think we're gonna try to keep bringing stuff to the table that these kids want to take, because I think it's important that we allow them to have opportunities outside of the classroom that will make them successful lifelong learners when they leave. So thank you guys for your support. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Thank you, Mrs. Kavanaugh, for all of your pictures, since I didn't have very many. So that's all we have. Now they have to go master class, because they're in the middle of a master's class right now, so. Thank you. Thank you, Jackie, for coming.
Like, some of the, the things that Kara didn't even mention, uh, that they do as well, there's a speech communications class that runs out of the Ag Department now, which is new over the last couple of years. Um, they kicked off the, the food scene with, uh, culinary leadership class that they actually team up with the ABLE program. So it's Kara's students also working with the ABLE. And that was kind of bringing culinary back. So there's other opportunities too that they didn't highlight. Then again, I think are unique to Sycamore and them kind of thinking outside the box and how we can do some cross-referencing, so. They do an amazing job. Tim, do you want to introduce Spartan TV?
Spartan TV is another unique program to our high school. Um, and you know, David Olson and Ralph Helm started it from grassroots and grew it basically on grants and now we've got it to a point where it's expanding and more and more students want to be involved. And it's kind of two segments, kind of in the school day and the after-school. It's great for our community. I mean, I still literally get emails from people who are traveling. I've got emails from people in Japan, Australia. Is the football game gonna be on? Arizona, uh, Bob Hill in Indiana, all the time. How do, how do I get into this? Where, where's the link for this? So, uh, people, alumni do use it. The kids have learned a ton. Um, it has benefited kids in terms of scholarships and they leave here, they're able to go into college and get scholarships and get started right away and are ahead of their, their peers. So, um, it's a great program. Continue to grow. And again, it's a, I would say, non-traditional education, but really important, hands-on. It's not math, science, English, social studies, in that realm, but it's, it's more integrated. So, uh, Greg Dodario has, uh, taken over it this year, so I'm gonna let him come and talk a little bit.
He's, he's, uh, TV production, so he teaches class, but we're focusing on the after-school stuff, so Steven Jamrock, uh, Sycamore grad as well, who kind of went through the program at the beginning, um, will, will present. Do you want this or do you just want to? Um, yeah, if I care for that. Thank you. So, just a little bit about myself really quick. I am Steven Jamrock. I graduated twenty-twenty and was in the Spartan TV program for all four years. So twenty-sixteen, things were not as advanced as they are now, we'll say. It's definitely grown a ton and it's been an amazing experience going from being a student in the program to now running, managing, and operating the day-to-day basis of pretty much a full broadcast industry in a high school. So we'll start off with a little bit of history with our senior who has been the only one to experience pre-COVID Spartan TV.
Hi, I'm Emily Bykowski. As Mr. Jamrock said, I am the senior, the only senior, unfortunately. But I'm here to talk about history. So in twenty thirteen, Spartan TV was established. We were able to provide live coverage of sporting events and concerts. Twenty fourteen, luckily, we got some new broadcasting equipment, allowing us for more professional setup. And then in twenty fifteen, we got our trailer, which means we were allowed to do football, or then football and possibly, did we do soccer?
We did a few soccer games. We did a lot of stuff outside the just normal cameras on the bleacher, so, big expansion.
And then twenty sixteen is when we started doing more events such as Oracles, Orcasus and Rental Dance Shows. Twenty seventeen, the football field and main gym video boards were installed, allowing for the stadium-wide replay for our football games. And then twenty twenty-one is when we did our outside live Orcasus show. And then today, I don't know much about the history as I was just, I'm a senior now, so I can tell you about we, what we do now. A full setup is about ten to fifteen kids, one director, one technical director, one assistant director, one replay operator, one graphics operator, five camera operators, and three announcers. We don't always get that many, but we strive to get those ten to fifteen kids. And I want to stress, all of those positions are students. Mr. Jamrock is only overseeing us. All of it is student-led. Our minimum setup is about three kids, one camera person, one director, and one person for graphics. Any questions?
Hi, I'm Adrian Sperner. I'm a freshman at Sycamore High School. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about us as a club. Thank you. So, uh, something great about Spartan TV is that anybody can join the club. You don't need any past experience and you don't need to part, be a part of the TV production class, though it is helpful, because some of the information that we learn overlaps. And it's a great class, too, so, you know, there's that. There's no required number of events you have to work or hours, so this allows students with other sports and club activities going on to be flexible and work events while still fulfilling those requirements with the other clubs and sports. We, at, with Spartan TV, we broadcast sporting events at the high school, concerts and other events such as the Southeast Talent Show, uh, the, the musical and play, and other district events. And we've been streaming on NFHS, which requires a subscription to view. So we pulled in about eighty-five hundred dollars from NFHS subscriptions this year. Uh, spartanTV.org, Metronet, and Comcast are all running up after a pandemic hiatus, which we've used for special events such as the talent show, our Spartan News, uh, Spartan TV Junior and Spartans Read together. And a iOS and Android app are currently in development right now. A growing Spartan TV sponsorship program, which has student-led funding for the club, is in development right now, where businesses can support, uh, and the profits that they put into us, go to the club for future equipment. Uh, and we've had a number of field trips, as you can see on the board. We've went to NIU twice now and we visited Upstaging with Tech to visit their warehouse.
One quick thing about the field trips. So the NIU Huskies Stadium, we traditionally bring our full trailer setup out there, run our whole broadcast. We're the only ones on the other side of the bleachers. So if you're ever at the NIU Sycamore-DeKalb game, look out across, that's Spartan TV on the far side. And then that's all our normal equipment, same setup we'd have for a normal away football game. The communication center for Sycamore versus DeKalb basketball is an amazing opportunity. They produce live ESPN broadcasts out of their studio there. And due to really good working relationships with NIU over the last few years, we've had the chance for our students to then sit down in the positions, run cameras, run replay, run colors, graphics. So they run a full professional broadcast setup here and at various other locations, which has been an amazing experience.
I'm going to hand it over to Caleb.
Hi, I'm Caleb Posey. I'm a junior here. Um, this is actually my first year in Spartan TV, so it's, it's a lot of new things to me. Our most popular games this year were obviously football. Um, we had the most live views out of all, like, a hundred-plus events, so we have football, baseball, volleyball, soccer for both boys and girls, and wrestling. For football, we had six thousand five hundred seventy-three live views. For football, we had 6,573 live views throughout the whole season and 948 watchbacks, so people can go back and watch our videos. Wrestling and basketball. So those were our top, our second highest. Not as high as football, obviously, but we still had a lot of views, so that was pretty cool.
Yeah.
Today, our most recent upgrades were on our trailer, trailer. So before, we were only able to use the trailer here at the high school. Recently, we got a generator and battery backups, so that allows us to go out and do away games. Are limited, oh, sorry.
So this year, we'll be having a limited baseball and softball season coverage. We've experimented a little bit in the past with covering softball around back. We'll pull the trailer over and then just film one there here at the swamp, as it's called. Baseball, we always toyed around with the idea, we never actually got out there yet. We've had a few people help us out in a way where we'll be able to get the trailer over to the park this year. And now that our trailer is fully mobile again, we'll be ready to go out and hopefully stream a few baseball games this year. Kind of get kids familiar with some more different sporting events instead of the traditional, just here's what the high school has to offer inside the building. Let's get out in the community and meet some new people and get a great broadcast out. And then you want to pick it back up?
Yeah, so along with soccer and baseball and football, we also do other events. So we cover cheer competitions and talent shows and dance recitals that'll be video for Tech. We got to do orcasis, which was like a more cinematic. It's different than like games. And it was really cool and it's exciting to see how it went. Graduation, we have upcoming, and senior awards. So we're basically over with the sports season, but we still have a couple of major events left.
So Spartan TV challenges, we're in a position where it's been amazing getting all the support from community members, sports boosters, SEF, the district itself, for funding. But some of our equipment that we use somewhat daily is coming up on 10-plus years old. It's an ever-evolving world, obviously, with the broadcast industry. So having equipment that's so old, holding us back in certain limitations here, and there's always been a problem. But we're always trying to strive for perfection. We aim for the best, we do what we can, we work under pressure to make sure we get something out no matter what happens. In the long term, we'd eventually like to see a more secured funding situation. But right now, what we're looking to do is just replace a little bit of equipment here and there. So we're falling behind a little bit. It's been rough this year. We've had a few key pieces of equipment leave the district or just break because it's very old at this point. But over time, we've been able to work with older cameras, use them for parts, get other cameras put back together and working. And in general, just without the support the last few years, we wouldn't have been able to get this far. Next year is something really special. It's our 10-year anniversary. So first public reveal of our 10-year logo. So we've got an updated logo to showcase everything. We've got a mini-documentary series possibly in the planning for TV production students. Kind of cover the history of the program and possibly sell it as a DVD as a fundraiser later on. Just show a little more support for the community and everything it took to get us to where we are now. We've got football away coverage coming back up. As a few of you saw, we've got our trailer back up and running. We're running a generator with battery backups. We can run for an hour without a generator. So if we have to run and get gas really quick at some station out in Morris, who knows? If the generator goes down, we gotta get more fuel, so we're ready. We've got a good group of kids ready for football next year and overall, we're just super excited. Baseball and softball home game coverage, we're hoping to do in full force next year in addition to our soccer for the spring season. Then we're hoping to get a little bit involved with Pumpkin Fest, maybe just Walk-in Parade, figure out something, just get a little more community involvement. We've really strived to become more than just the high school broadcasting. It's great so far because so many of the sports bars and various other places downtown will turn us on on the weekend. I've had multiple people come up to me like, you guys were on MVPs or hobnobsers this weekend. And it's great to see the community getting so involved with high school sports. You don't see that in many places outside of Sycamore to the level that we get out here. And Spartan TV is 100% one of those Sycamore things that everyone who's lived in the community knows about. Just one of those things that everyone's always pushing for and everyone's always rooting for just seeing what we can do next. We've also introduced a few middle school students into the program. So we've got a low number right now, two to three, that are heavily interested in the program. Siblings are current students, but they're hoping to get out and join before high school. So they'll be available. They're pretty much treated as a, similar to a high school student. They have to be there for a game, they can run any equipment they'd like, they can make sure they're trained. And the high school students have enjoyed having just some extra hands here and there. And being able to introduce kids from a younger age to broadcasting has been really useful. A lot of these kids are already excited to see what the next step is once they're in high school. So they'll get to actually step in and have a little bit of a, kind of just a step ahead of everyone else in their class. Because, hey, I've run a camera for the last two years, I know how this all works. So thank you, obviously, to the Board of Education, it's been great. Thank you to District Administration for the support over the last few years. Mr. Dodario over there for helping get everything in the class set up. We've got maintenance staff, they have been a huge help the last week and a half or so. They've always been supportive, but this last week and a half, we've had to move the trailer like 12 times and then install battery backups, which requires a bunch of new outlets. So they've been amazing, making sure everything's there. SEF, sports boosters, and private donations. This has pretty much up until this year only ever been sponsored through private donations and funding outside of the school. So to be able to get to the point now where we're growing it big enough that we know we're going to be able to stay around for hopefully another 10 years, it's great. It's always a little worrisome when you see the numbers go down because a big piece of equipment breaks and you just don't have money. But we've made it so far and we're really excited to see how things go. Community members, obviously, none of it would have been possible without them because they're our biggest supporters. They're the ones paying the subscription fees, they're the ones coming out and watching us. And thank you to the current students, past and present. In reality, none of this would be possible without the kids. If the kids weren't there, there would be zero chance these broadcasts would work. I've tried doing solo broadcasts as a student, it does not work. You need at least a team of three. So it's just amazing to see how many kids we can get involved. And you really learn a completely different view on, hey, this is how this stuff's actually done. People sit there and watch all their ESPN and NFL stuff, but no one really thinks, what's the behind-the-scenes to actually make it happen? And here, the kids actually get to learn, this is how it happens. So thank you all, I appreciate it, and happy 10 years of Spartan TV.
One more comment on Spartan TV and a tie to the community. Mr. Wilder and Steven, we went and visited Nighthawk Productions, it's in town. Upstaging does auto lighting and transportation for concerts. It's Nighthawk, correct? They do all the video boards, so they're looking for employees, so this leads into them. There's a graduate, James Gardner, graduated 2011. He's been on the road with Elton John for the last three years, all over the world, does all the filming at his concerts. So there's opportunities and there's a connection to Sycamore. So just starting to develop a relationship with Nighthawk, hopefully down the road, it will help our kids and help them and help our community, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Spartan TV?
Sorry.
Students, don't go anywhere, you need to come up here for just a second. I know you're trying to get out of here, I'll keep it quick. Any questions for them?
I just, I just want to comment, Spartan TV is one of the programs that, when I came here, just blew me out of the water. Having worked in schools for as long as I had and then to see what it was capable of. Just amazing. And then there's been a lot of turnover in the communications department, one of which is Rob Helm, who was really overseeing Spartan TV. I cannot say enough positive about Steven Jamrock and his leadership, just running the program, but his desire to involve students. So I had the chance, I've been in the studio before, but I've not been in the trailer. So I wanted to go out and see the trailer tonight before the meeting, I did that. Caleb, Adrian walked me through how it all works out there. And then I asked Steven, you know, talked about a director. Well, I just assumed Steven was the director. No, that was Emily. Right, the only director up until recently, until this year.
So this year, I didn't really do Spartan TV last year because like it wasn't really like posted and I was like, are, is there even a club? And so this year, when I talked to Mr. Jamrock at one of the football games, he's like, Spartan TV's back. And I'm like, okay, I'm in. And so I started directing this year, this was my first time directing. But around halfway through, so beginning of second semester, I decided, I'm done directing. I want other students direct because then they have a semester to learn. Like I'll still be at games, but other students, freshmen, sophomores, and our juniors, I'm gonna be there to help them. So they get to work through it with me, to have someone there in case like, oh, what do I do if there's an injury? Because we need to get away from that injury as soon as possible. Or what do I do if this stops working, our camera's down? They have someone there to support them, be like, okay, this is what we need to do instead of freaking out in the moment. Because that moment, you have one second to decide what to do and they just need someone to help them.
I was blown out of the water. I mean, to Steven's credit, this is completely student-run. And up until second semester, there was, there was one director. Emily approached Steven, wanted other students to get involved to learn that craft. So now that number has grown. It's just amazing, the work that Steven has done and under his leadership, the degree to which students have been involved. Seeing some of those broadcasts, I get to go to games and see all the work that goes on. Kids run around, yanking cords everywhere and it's amazing. So just kudos to you guys, thank you for what you do. Thank you to Steven and his leadership to get the kids involved and, and the vision for the future, working with Lauren. And she's, she's worked with us at the district level to plan for the future. So I just want to give them a shout-out before they go, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now for the most exciting part of the meeting is the superintendent's report. I, like Mrs. Poyner, I just have a couple of slides in. This is first meeting of the month, so we try to hit a future-focused item. And I really want to go back to an item that I brought up a couple of months ago, which had to do with mindfulness and wellness. So recently, we were talking at the admin building and Mr. Ronnick was talking about a a trip that some of our staff members are gonna take to the University of Wisconsin. Mr. Carlson, make sure I get this right, Nick, make sure I get this right. But a trip that they were taking, professional growth trip to the University of Wisconsin to learn about meditation and activities and specifically athletics. So I kind of touched on mindfulness and wellness a couple of months ago, learned about this, this trip to University of Wisconsin. Mindfulness is something that I'm still kind of learning about, it is still somewhat evolving. But then the use in activities and athletics, really, especially at the collegiate level, kind of blew me away. I didn't know anything about that. And actually, Chad McGate, if anybody remembers Chad, I obviously don't know Chad, not being here for very long. But Chad is a graduate. Remember what year, Mr. Carlson?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine? Thanks, Mrs. Frank Witz. Chad is a graduate of Sycamore High School in 1999. And he is, was the first, I think, maybe the only, but was the first person on the college campus who oversees meditation and its implementation in student activity. So just seemed to be a fitting opportunity, just to kind of add to reinforce the use of mindfulness in education. So this is a quote that was published in an article recently attributed to Chad when they were talking about use of meditation and training for athletes. He likened it to physical training, the strength training and the physical training that athletes go through. But then also talked about the importance of the mental game. And if you don't set aside time to train for that, it doesn't happen. So years ago, and I haven't shared this with Nick, who brought up the trip that a couple of our social workers and staff are taking. My younger brother had an opportunity to play high school football and played in a state title championship game. So he often will relive kind of those memories and talk about the friends that he made. And one of the things that he remembers to this day was that their coach used visualization in preparing the players for the game. Every game of the season, home, away, regular season, playoff. If my brother was standing here, he would tell you that one of the things he remembers from that senior season was, or his junior year, was the visualization that the coach took the players through right before the state championship game. How impactful it was, how it prepared them for the game. Literally, imagine 50, 60 high school athletes sitting down, helmets off, completely silent. The coach is walking them through, getting ready for the game, walking out of the locker room, onto the field. What's the weather feel like? He's talked to me about it many times, but it reminded me of that. And to this day, he attributes a lot of the success that they had during that season to the visualization that the coach used during that time. So this is 30 years or so ago. My younger brother's not quite there, I'm there, but he's not quite there. And here it is kind of coming up again, mentally preparing and training yourself to be successful and to deal with adversity. And so the second bullet point, mindfulness and mental health practices like visualization can help practitioners deal with overcoming overwhelming situations. So there was a quote in that same article from a University of Wisconsin football player. Freshman walking out at Camp Randall Stadium on a turf for the first time, never played in front of a crowd like that. Helping him deal with that overwhelming situation, stay focused. And then Chad mentioned in that same article, potentially impacting performance, trying to find ways to measure that. And then maybe even reduction in injuries, just kind of being mentally prepared for participating in activity. So that's something that's happening at the collegiate level, probably something that's happening at the professional level. May work its way down to K-12 and high school. So I just wanted to hit on that because it had come up recently, but we had talked about it a couple of months ago, just the implementation of mindfulness in school. So really quick, just future-focused, but like always, I want to open it up for questions or comments or suggestions.
If you want to know more about Chad, he's always on LinkedIn. If you are on LinkedIn and his articles, he's a wonderful, Sarah Wilbrook, he's just a great kid. He's outstanding athlete, very, very smart. Just really went through some difficulties at the beginning with the loss of his dad and that was very, very traumatic. He's just an amazing man.
I've just learned a little bit about him, but it sure seems to reflect that, so it's good to know. I'm on LinkedIn, I'll have to send him a connection now.
Steve, the visualization, I'm new to this idea, I'm trying to understand. So is this like the idea of you have, like somebody who's guiding you, a group of people, like orating what this looks like, like a play-by-play? In a way for you to mentally grapple with what's about to happen and then be like, is that, am I hitting it or what?
That's exactly it, kind of based on what my brother shared with me. And we used to talk, it, it just, I coached for a couple of years, football, wrestling. And we would often talk about, talk with kids about the mental side of the game. In fact, one of the other quotes in that article was, is it a lot of participating isn't just the physical? A lot of collegiate athletes have a kind of a natural, a lot of them work at it, but a lot of them have a natural, physical, you know, talent. But it's the mental side, dealing with adversity when you are injured or when you're in the game and you experience a difficult situation. Ball doesn't bounce your way or the ball isn't dropping when you're, when you're playing basketball, for example. So a lot of that was just mentally preparing yourself to walk out onto the court, to walk out onto the mat. Literally, what's it smell like? What's it feel like? If you're outside, what's the weather like? How does that feel on your skin? Football is played in really hot weather in the fall, at the beginning of the year, and then it gets really cold as you get through the season. So preparing yourself for the elements. And if it's, again, Chad talked about this in the article, a lot of times we, you know, we, they prepare athletes physically, weightlifting and conditioning. But that mental side has sometimes been overlooked. So he just talked about the importance of that. And literally, it's imagining, you know, yourself playing the game, participating in the activity and kind of almost anticipating what's gonna happen. So that may be both confidence, so when the game is actually happening, you're ready for what happens next. So again, when I heard about this, thought about my brother and just what the coach did them to prepare and how that impacted him. So it's kind of interesting to see this.
Is this a tool you see being used in Spartan Stretch or like in a SEL-type capacity at the high school or middle school?
I could eventually, almost from kind of a counseling, social work standpoint. Been many times over the years, as a building administrator or teacher, coached students through situations, especially conflict. So you're not getting along with another student or you're not getting along with any group of students. So you're not getting along with another student or you're not getting along with a group of students. Uh, a student sometimes is part of a group and then gets ostracized and is kind of alone or becomes kind of part of a different social group. What's that look like? When you go to lunch, what's going to happen? What line do you go to? What table do you go to? Don't just walk around waiting to figure out what you're going to do. That almost makes you a victim potentially. So I could, I could definitely see that and that may be something that counselors are, are trained in, social workers are, are trained in and use already. Um, if not, I could absolutely see that application in, in the school environment for SEL and under other kind of mental health types of situations for sure. Steve, can I jump in?
Sure. Um, I think this is very beginning stages, you know, kind of the kickoff is meeting with, with Chad, who was uh super excited to work with Sycamore. You know, he taught here for a little bit as well. But um, they talked about a social media presence, uh, somehow using Spartan TV and doing things, putting signage throughout the school. So embedding it throughout the school community, but then I think with those individual sports, embedding it within practices. So this kind of started with social workers, um, Mary Ellen Spicer, Ashna Jordan. Um, and then Luke Spicer, who's a coach for us, and, and Mary Ellen's son, and Mark Holstein, who has a passion for sports. They kind of thought this out, but then our coaches were on board. So our coaches are going to be part, some of our coaches are going to be part of this visit as well. And then I, I think they see the need for our student athletes in these high-pressure situations uh to do more on the, the mental health and wellness side of things. So I see them embedding that within uh their programs as well somewhere.
See, Nick, like you hit, um, I think what I'm thinking too, in that when you talk, Steve, about culture being a big issue, like when we talk about the suspension reports, we talk about the discipline issues. The coaches and the club advisors, I think in a lot of ways, have a really huge culture-setting opportunity. And these students look to them as guy, guidance, as they're, they're your hands-on-the-ground social workers, pseudo-social workers. Right within their capacity. So I think there's a huge opportunity for that culture shift. If like you're, you're talking about, you're tackling it from the coaching and from the, the, you know, from the Spartan TV advising or, you know, Spartan TV advising standpoint too. So it's exciting to hear that this is a dialogue that's happening here, addressing the culture issue, so.
I, I think also, um, to kind of piggyback on that. You know, when we come twice a month and, and make decisions and over the past couple of years, some have been pretty difficult. Gets, gets a lot of coverage, rightfully so in the media. Um, but in between meetings, there's oftentimes not a lot. Our student athletes, you know, I think of Evan Carrier, who's a girls' basketball player. I think of Zach, um, Zach Crawford as a football player. Tons of coverage. They're in the newspaper a lot more than, than I am. So they're looked up to by other students. Helping them to be the, the kind of the best version of themselves, maybe this is another aspect to that. Those, those players oftentimes look up to coaches, but there are middle school, elementary and younger high school students that look up to, to these students. So helping them to prepare, you know, one other aspect is just dealing with being in the media so much and getting that much attention. So just another aspect of how I think this could be really beneficial.
You know, I put out a reading list for my clients each year. The book that comes to my mind from five or six years ago was by a former U of I professor. She's somewhere else now, but Mindset by Carolyn Dweck. It's a very popular book. It's right along these lines. It talks about these very same things of mindfulness and mental preparedness, whether it's academic or sports or just life. So I would highly recommend that, like all the coaches, everybody read that book and like a book study.
Yeah.
It would be smart. It's right up the alley of what this is. Very good book.
Mindset?
Mindset.
Okay.
Carolyn Dweck.
Two nice copies in his office.
I, I read it six or seven years ago. It's a great book, so.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item then is open discussion of future agenda items. Any thought for discussion issues?
I won't be here to benefit from it, but maybe when these people come back from this trip, they might want to come and present and award what they experienced and learn from it.
At conference, uh, the IASB uh legislative conference we went to, I picked up a brochure. I thought it was interesting with us having new board members come on, a lot of new board members. I'd be interested in just queuing up a workshop if we could. I don't know what, I mean, I think like this one was interesting, the Myers-Briggs type indicator. Would, I think was, was helpful, but beyond that, just something to get to know who these new board members are. And so the assimilation process is easy, you know, it's, you know, we're one board meeting away from that, so. So there isn't any downtime for our board for acclamation. I think it'd be great if we just. As far as which course or what workshop, um, I think Lisa Gonzalez would be the point person on that. Would that be something that we could take a, take a workshop on? Maybe it's like a, a board culture workshop. Again, this was just one opportunity, but there were a couple they offered, so.
It would be easy to get in touch with Lisa and maybe find a link where there's kind of a, an menu of options. Share that with the board and then that's something that we'll just talk about in the future. Yeah, for sure.
I'd be concerned to see what the cost is.
Yeah, I think this one was like forty-five bucks a person. It was pretty cheap.
Okay, that's reasonable.
Yeah, nothing crazy.
But then we, you know, we're going to have to select an additional member.
Well, and right, and that is where I'm thinking.
So it might be worthwhile waiting until we have that in place.
It's a good point. So you at least have that person.
Yeah, so, so we don't have an odd person out, so it's.
Well, and the nice thing, again, not that I'm advocating specifically for this one, but this was actually an individual workshop, so you do on your own time. And it kind of gives the board a whole idea of who each person is. What, and like this is the forty-five dollar per participant and it's just like a paper version. So we, we'd all do it and then it's like, hey, this is this person's profile. So they'd be like, oh, Michael, he's a cagey guy. Stay away from him. There, there were a group ones, but those were more expensive, so again, it's an idea.
I wonder if my, uh, my profile has changed. They say that they change for a lot of times.
We're being under skinned for the question. I'm sure.
You're not all excited to take a test?
Well, I took that, I took that one in high school.
I remember that stuff.
E T Peter.
Everybody knows their initials. Uh, but yeah, I think something like that would be worth, would be worth thinking about because yeah, we'll have three, three new board members to integrate. And having something like that would be helpful.
If you think of a seminar on um like board member roles and effective board members, right?
Governments for Trump?
Yeah, those sorts of things.
Yeah.
Sometimes waiting for the Triple I Conference to come around, try and take that is, you know, six months, six, seven months after you.
Yeah, a little time goes by. If you check their web, their website, they may have a new board member session before the conference. Maybe it's a Saturday session or something. They're doing some of those.
They do.
We, we have.
Me too.
Yeah.
Well, it's not Myers-Briggs, but fifth grade, they do, what kind of snowman are you? Get to know all the other snowmen. And it's not forty-five, so that was later.
Other issues or observations, future agenda items?
Then is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment or dismissal of personnel, student discipline and imminent litigation?
Second.
Moved in second and roll call?
Devo?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Charlo?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Going to executive session, will come back for our. We're uh back in open session. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing dismissal of part-time educational support personnel as presented?
Moved in second.
Moved in seconded, roll call?
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Charlo?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to approve uh the personnel report as presented? Uh, this is the report which includes employment, resignations, retirements, terminations and leaves of absences.
Someone. Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call?
Ren?
Yes.
Charlo?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, is there a motion to uh uphold the suspension of student number one-three-nine-nine-five?
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call?
Charlo?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hall of paper?
All right.
All right, we stand adjourned.